I've never shared the stage with a real actor, so this is a lot of pressure. I want to thank all of you for coming tonight. This event is sponsored by the Crossville Cumberland County Chamber of Commerce. And my deepest thanks to the Playhouse and their staff. They're always excellent. Quite frankly, I don't think that any place in the state of Tennessee could put on a production like this as it is. So, thanks to Bryce and Nicole and John and all the other staff that are running around here doing crazy things. So, thanks to all of you. I want to thank the candidates. We had seven of them be able to be here tonight, and they're taking time out of their schedules. And I want to thank them for coming. I hope this has been an enjoyable little enterprise we've embarked upon. The questions tonight were all made available to the candidates. Everyone saw them. There are no surprises. And we did that for a purpose. We wanted to be sure that people had time to think about some key issues. We got a lot of public input on these questions, and we had to boil it down to the top seven or eight questions to ask everyone. And there'll be asked in order. John will start here in a second. And go ask the first question to the number one slot over there, and then we're just going to go right down the line. Okay. That's right. The candidates came in tonight, and when they walked in, they drew a number, and they got assigned their spot based on that number. So, it was completely by random chance that they got to sit where they're at. Candidates will have two minutes opening statement, and then we'll start questions. Each candidate will have a chance to answer every question, and they will have 90 seconds. And Nicole's doing something silly up here like that. She's supposed to do that. And they've been told to look for those signals. I know that you all want to support your candidates, but try to keep your applause quickly, and so we can move on. Out of respect to the candidates, we get to hear everyone tonight, so let's try to have a degree of decorum. And finally, oh, this is the best part, where I get to turn everything over. John Fiante will be our moderator tonight. John is actually, I'm not going to get this right, Director of Marketing and New Works.
Yes.
Oh, boy. And keeping our time is our board member Nicole Hackman, and she's the Director of Development for the Playhouse. She has to bring in big money. So, with that, I'm going to shut up and turn over to John Fiante.
And Mr. Bundy, our sound engineer up there in the booth. Ladies and gentlemen, you could have been anywhere in the world tonight, but you're here with us in Crossville, Tennessee. Are you ready for the 2016 Crossville Chamber of Commerce Candidates Forum? Of course, you have to get it for our candidates. Let me introduce Mr. J.J. Graham, Mr. David Warner, Jerry J.J. Brownstedt, Ms. Jeanette Parsons, Ms. Terri Manning, Mr. Scott Shanks, and Mr. Robert E. Harrison. Thank you very much. One note that I want to make after each of the candidates makes his or her opening comments. I will have a comment from Mr. Charles Cooper, who is the only candidate who was unable to attend this evening. And then we will get to the questions section. So, is everybody ready? Mr. Graham, your opening statement, please.
Thank you very much, everybody, for being here tonight, and especially to the Chamber of Commerce and the Playhouse for allowing us to meet you all and to you all to meet us. My full name is Justice Henderson Graham III. My son's name is Justice Henderson Graham IV, and my grandson's name is Justice Henderson Graham V. I think that's why they call me J.J. I live at 1874 South Main Street. It's about a mile and a half down from the hospital. I've lived here all my life. I live in the same house that I was raised in. I went to high school here at CCHS in 1966. I was the captain of the football team, believe it or not. I went to Tennessee Tech in 1966, and I was a treasurer at Cap 5 Delta. And then 1968, I moved on to the University of Tennessee, and I was a treasurer of the Cap 5 fraternity there. And I took my BS degree in accounting. I came home after graduation, and I started preparing tax returns to both state and federal ever since. We have three children. Jessie is an actress. She's teaching at Troy University. And she graduated with a master's degree from Ohio. And then Justice went to Washington to get his master's degree, and he's still up there. He married a nice lady from William County of Louisville, and they have my grandson. I was elected to the council in 1996. I was the mayor in 1998. I've got 18 years of total experience. I've had some wonderful things that have gone on, and I am an avid golfer. Thanks for being here.
Thank you, Mr. Graham. Mr. Warner, your opening statement.
I'm going to try really hard to make two minutes. Well, there you go.
Now, remember, the flag is your warning. You have another 10 seconds.
Okay. I am a retired, can you hear me okay? I'm a retired lifelong resident of Cumberland County. I previously served four terms on the city council a while ago, and we served two-year terms. I kind of liked it. Four years sounds better if I can last. I'm a previous chairman of the board and president of Tennessee Association Association, my professional association. I retired as an educator at volunteer state community college with the rank of associate professor. Serving as administrative vice president of Tennessee J.C., Chair of the Regional Planning Commission, and I think there was one term when I was a vice mayor. I consider that I've interviewed for a job, and I understand that a hiring decision will be made in November. I'm going to look forward to that. Thank you, Brad, at the Chamber and staff for the opportunity. Thank you, John and Nicole, the Playhouse staff and volunteers, and thanks to the meeting. And most especially, thanks to the voters for taking the time to be here.
Thank you, Mr. Warner. Mr. Brownstedt.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I want to thank each and every one of you for being here with us tonight. I'd like to thank the Chamber for inviting me. I want to thank each of the candidates for coming up here and being with us tonight. I am seeking the city council position because I believe that it's my unwavering belief that the primary duty of a council member is to be a public servant to each one of you. I want to serve with devotion, and I want to be devoted to the taxpayers who have entrusted the city council with their hard-earned tax dollars. I'd like to quote from Mark Twain, a little statement that I live by every day. It says, "Always do right." And this will gratify some people. It'll astound the rest. It'll astonish the rest. I'm an honorably discharged Vietnam-era veteran. I have a beautiful wife, Jay. We have 17 grandchildren. Six children, 17 grandchildren. I'm a great supporter of civic and personal duty to our communities and have taken part in numerous charities throughout various communities around the nation. I've had awards from four separate Tennessee governors, including Governor Hasler, Governor Alexander, Senator Alexander, as well as Governor Rick Perry of Texas. I regard the city charter of our city as the law of the land approved by our state legislature. Past councils have played fast and loose with our city charter and on several occasions have downright violated it. And I find this to be a disgrace to every taxpaying citizen in this community.
Mr. Brownstedt, that's your two-minute mark.
Okay. And I thank you, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brownstedt. Ms. Parsons.
Good evening. I'm Jeanette Winningham Parsons. I have lived in Cumberland County, in Crossville, all of my adult life, and presently live on Holiday Drive. I'm a Christian and attend the First United Methodist Church in Crossville. I graduated from Cumberland County High School and attended Tennessee Tech for two years. I married Robert Parsons. We raised two children and have four grandchildren, ages 13 to 21, who live, work, and attend school in Crossville and Cumberland County. A few years ago, I retired from Cat Publishing Company after 42 years of service. For us, Crossville was an ideal place to work and raise a family. I'd like to help Crossville continue to be a great place to live for my family and yours.
Thank you, Ms. Parsons. Ms. Manning.
Hello, everybody. Good to see everybody. Thank you, Brad, Playhouse. And my name is Tridale Manning, and my parents are Tommy, Robbie Neal, Crossville. Have two brothers, Tommy, Ray Neal, and Jerry Neal. And I graduated in class of 1988. And my husband is David Manning. And while I'm ready for city council, I will commit to all citizens of Crossville to do just that, knowledge as to kids, any successful councilman, city government should try to work toward common goals which would benefit our citizens. Crossville decision we made based on what will be in the best interest of citizens as well hold not just one, but be their voice, stand up for all the citizens of working hard people. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Manning. Mr. Shanks.
Thank you. It's a pleasure to be here tonight, and I certainly want to thank everyone that had anything to do with putting this on screen. My name is Scott Shanks. I was born at Cumberland Medical Center. My mother and father is Paul and Dor Shanks. I was blessed to have a wonderful father and mother, and I know that's not the case for all kids these days, but I was truly blessed in that respect. My mom was fortunate enough to be a stay-at-home mom, and she was just, did everything for us. And my father was just such a wonderful person for me, and ended up working with him later on. I attended city school, Cumberland Elementary, graduated from CCHS in 1979. From there, I went on to the University of Tennessee, graduated in accounting, graduated in 1983. There, I met my wife-to-be, Julie Williams. We are a team. We've been married now for 33 years, I think. And I normally can say that if I'm not even under pressure. That's easy. We were married in 1983. I know that for a fact. Anyway, we weren't very much as a team, and I'm truly blessed to have her as my wife. As far as my working life, I started with LP Shanks Company really when I was about 14 or 15. It was a family business. My grandfather started the business. And when I graduated college at 22, my dad threw me right in. It's the first time I really did anything in the office. I was always warehouse driving. I learned a lot from the warehouse side of our business. We were a distribution company. My father passed away, I think, when I was 29, and I was running the company ever since. I was fortunate enough to sell the business in, when I was, in 2011, I was 50. And I'm now retired and basically a professional volunteer. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shanks. Mr. Harrison, comments.
And I too want to thank the Chamber for putting this on, the Playhouse for hosting us, and everybody for coming out tonight. I'm Rob Harrison, and I grew up in Crossville. I went to Crossville Elementary and Martin Junior High School and CCHS, class of 74. Then went on to Vanderbilt, majored in economics, and graduated in class of 78, and then went back and got an MBA in 82, also in accounting and marketing. And then went to work at Price Waterhouse in their small business consulting division. This is one of the big eight accounting firms in the world. Got to see a lot of businesses from the inside out, and it was a really great experience. And then got into a commercial photo lab business and did big display prints for trade shows. And the best job ever was all the Saturn dealerships, when Saturn first came out. That was great fun. And then came back here in 96 to be with family. I had met my wife Lisa, and we had a new baby, Grace, who's now 21. Catherine came along, graces it in Auburn, which is something I never thought I would say. Poor Eagle. Catherine is an empty issue. And I came back and went into the family real estate business, rental properties. And I also volunteered on the hospital board, Vice Chairman, also Chairman of the Playhouse, and Head of the Finance Committee at the church. And I'm running because I want to try to calm things down and increase economic development so our kids have an opportunity to come back here.
Thank you, Mr. Harrison. And now I have a comment from Charles Cooper Jr. Excuse me. My name is Charles Cooper Jr. I have lived in the city of Crossville most of my life. I've worked for the city of Crossville for over 20 years as a firefighter, EMT, paramedic. I now work for Cumberland County Ambulance Service as a paramedic. The reason I'm running for city council is that I want to give back to the city I love. I feel that I am qualified because of my years of service to the city and the knowledge that I have obtained over the years working for the city. I am for economic growth of our city. I would love to see every citizen have a good paying and steady job. I also want to be a voice for our city employees. My door will always be open to the employees and the citizens of the great city of Crossville. I want to work with all city council members in harmony to make Crossville one of the best cities in the world. I believe respect and honor as a city council member will go a long way in helping solve the issues that we face. I look forward to working with everyone involved to help get more industry interested in coming to our city. Any questions are always welcomed. The number I can be reached at is 931-787-4776. I feel that I am a very dedicated and loyal citizen and eager to help the citizens of Crossville. Thank you for your time, and I hope to work with everyone soon. Charles Cooper Jr. So, are we ready to answer some questions? Excellent. The first question, we will begin with Mr. Graham. Question number one. What is your plan to promote economic development in our community, to bring in new business?
Thank you. We have a vision to promote a five, 10, and 20-year vision for roads, water, sewer, fire police protection, and of course, recreation. All this requires infrastructures. We need to make sure our roads serve perimeter transportation so our workforce can make it to work safely and on time. Army Corps of Engineers have indicated that a three-and-a-half million gallon a day water filtration plant will need to be built pretty soon. Also, we must continue our efforts to raise the Meta Park Dam. We need to increase our sewer plant capacity by a million and a half gallons a day. Business comes to where it's invited. We will join with the Chamber, with support from the county as well, to provide industrial park property. We will strongly support payments in lieu of taxes. We will promote tourism. It was a $117 million business last year. We will promote retiree recruitment. We will promote cooperation with Fairfield, Tinsley, the State Park, and others, and we will keep our golf tournaments.
Thank you, Mr. Graham. Mr. Warner.
Okay. I kind of focused on the back end of that question, the bringing in the new business portion. Number one, I've got to agree with the J.J. chair. Let's embrace the horizon initiative. Lots of people across many different fields and areas in this entire county work to develop that document. Beyond that, I'd say what we need to do in this county, and specifically in Crossville, is to examine the areas of outflow or leakage where residents are tending to buy goods and services outside of our area. Now, this ought to include a detailed projection of sales current, sales current projected population and sales along the current projected population demographics. It includes gender, age, and household income. I believe the city council has recently approved a three-year contract with a retail consultant firm to accomplish that purpose. I believe the city council has just recently done this, in last month, so it's going to be coming down the road eventually. I believe that local businesses should have first access to this study. In addition to all of the consulting firms' recommendations and any strategies that they identify, existing businesses in Crossville, Cumberland County should be assisted to grow their goods and services as a first step. As a second step, we should vigorously pursue consulting firm recommendations and strategy identifying and pursuing regional and national firms.
Thank you, Mr. Warner. Mr. Brownstedt.
Our community faces the same dilemma as every other community in America, and that's the loss of jobs, and primarily in the manufacturing area of those jobs. It says we need to promote, we need to promote our community and the positives in our community. We need to make our city marketing department be held accountable to the city and to the taxpayer. We should determine what incentives we can afford to offer companies wanting to move in. We should determine the types of structures these companies need, and we need to actively seek out companies that are willing to relocate.
Thank you, Mr. Brownstedt. Ms. Parsons.
I think we need to have available a qualified workforce for existing and potential businesses. Leadership and mentoring needs to be available in our schools, and we might be able to take advantage of the aging population that we have. I will support the Chamber and other organizations that are instrumental in recruiting businesses, and I will support existing businesses, especially those that plan for expansion.
Thank you, Ms. Parsons. Ms. Manning.
I believe she'll pass to work together with the leaders of the companies to get them here. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Shanks.
Yes. We have to be ready. When we get a chance for a company to come in, and they're taking a look at Crossville, we have to be ready for that. Of course, as Jay said, we have to have the infrastructure, which is obviously we have to have. We have to aggressively be talking to people locally, in the region, in the state. I feel like the big issue with me is the perception of Crossville. I feel like when someone is coming to visit Crossville, and the CEO of a company that has an interest in coming here drives down, comes into Crossville and drives, say, to the main street, what do they see? Do they see anything special that makes them think, "Wow, I'd like to move here"? Well, it may not be him that's making that decision. It may be the CEO's wife, because that is who makes a lot of decisions, as all of us men know. So, perception is a big thing. But if we have a vibrant downtown, I think that goes so far with what can happen in Crossville. When we have the perception that, this gives the perception, that Crossville really has gotten together. We had a chance to do that. Unfortunately, that didn't happen in the past, but hopefully, that's something we can change going forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shanks. Mr. Harrison.
I think the first thing we need to do is stop squabbling on the front page of the paper. All due respect to the paper. This is, I think, terribly detrimental to our image when people are looking us up, thinking about moving here, for example. On the hospital board, we try to bring in medical professionals. The first thing they're going to look at is news about Crossville, and they're going to see all this negative press. So, my first wish would be that we can stop the fighting and fussing. And then, I think, we do need to be ready when the opportunity comes along, but also we need to work with the Chamber in the targeted industry study that they are doing, which is designed to not just wait for someone good to come along, but to actively see what our strong points are, and then try to go out and look for companies that might fit that type of thing.
Thank you. Our next question, and we will start with Mr. Warner. Either as permanent or interim, Crossville has had a revolving door of folks serving the city manager. Why do you think this has been the case?
Interesting question. I'd give that a comment or two. We have a manager commission in form of government with a legislative and executive powers, the life of the council. The administrative functions, the life of the manager. The council acts as a body to direct the manager. We should be clear on that. His understanding is a rise from lack of communication, overstepping of boundaries by council or council members, lack of clarity in the expectations of the council by the manager. These all lead to a lack of confidence in the manager and the manager in the council. There's a need, there's a clear need for a list of legislative expectations and goals for the manager, a clear understanding of individual council members' limitations and the administrative functions of the city. I feel like dedicated, at least quarterly, city annual review is between the manager and the council can be beneficial. That's all.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Brownstedt.
We have had a situation in the past where a council member has actually camped out at city hall. And we've also had certain council members that believe that they can tell the city manager what to do. The city manager is to receive orders from the city council as a whole, not from one individual city council member. And I believe, honestly, people, that it is the mentality of the city council members themselves that needs to change.
You're here. Thank you, Mr. Brownstedt. Ms. Parsons.
I believe council members are elected to help govern the city. It seems that some are trying to become involved in the daily and weekly business of the city. This should be the job of the hired manager. A very clear job description needs to be outlined for the city manager position, and unless there are unusual circumstances, a yearly performance review by the council should be added.
Thank you. Ms. Manning.
There are too much favoritism. Manning is too much for a city manager, get a good, get a good city manager for the people and do the right thing. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Shanks.
Well, there's no question it's been a political tug-of-war. In the council, there's no question it must unify. When we elect a city manager, this city manager is a professional. It's just someone that's been trained, has experience in running the city. When, as far as the city councilman, that is not the case. My background is running a business, a distributor to convenience stores. I can tell you as far as how I ran a business, I had about 150 employees when I sold the business. We grew from 34 when I started to about 150. I had probably six people that reported directly to me. It's crazy for me to be going out and telling people that are under the people that I'm that's directly responsible to me what they need to do. If I'm doing that, why do I have a supervisor that handles those things? So, I'm a big believer in not micromanaging. That is just the way things should be done. I just think, really, as city council, we need a dose of common sense. I think trying to spend so much time, micromanaging is a real issue. Basically, I think as far as the turnover, we're quick to hire, we're way too quick to fire. I'm not a big believer in firing.
Thank you. Mr. Harrison.
Well, I think all too often, politics has trumped good sense in the council, and three-two votes have happened all too often. and three, two votes have happened all too often. I think it probably, we should probably look seriously at increasing the council seats by two in order to have more stability in, in our voting and decision making. That would be my approach to this.
Mr. Gray.
City managers in Crossville has changed because of new councils, the changes in their priorities, health concerns of the city managers, and very honestly, some unqualified appointments. This causes chaos in both the executive branch and the legislative branch. In choosing our city manager, I will ask about their education, their experience as a city manager, their willingness to move to Crossville and invest in it. I will ask about their management style, their philosophy about managing our city resources, and how they want to be judged as manager. The hiring of our city manager will be one of the most important decisions we make in the near future. Thank you.
Thank you. Our third question, we will begin with Mr. Brownstedt. Sir, what would you like to see done to address the needs of youth of our community?
It's very simple. I won't be 90 seconds. Very, very simple. We reinitiate the provisions of the Horizon project that the taxpayers already spent money on and they put on hold. We do not need to waste taxpayers' money. I believe that we need to provide safe places for our children, and I'm open to any, any possibility and explore any possibility, but at the same time, I want to make sure it's not going to be a financial burden unnecessarily on the taxpayer. I do not believe the taxpayer are here to raise the children, that's for the families to do. So, I would reopen the Horizon, reinitiate the Horizon provisions, and work together with the county and the Chamber, and let's get this stuff done, and let's not talk about it anymore. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Parsons.
I think children need a safe environment to learn, play, work, and volunteer. I think Crossville provides excellent recreational facilities, ball fields, soccer fields, playgrounds, walking trails. We need to maintain these facilities and keep them a safe place to be. I think we need to continue to support the Art Circle Library and Cumberland County Playhouse. This is important so youth in Cumberland County can have the opportunity to participate in any of these they choose. We may be lacking in providing an indoor facility for youth and adult activities.
Thank you. Ms. Manning.
Bring back the boys' club and girls' club, get boys and girls to help in the community with different organizations. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Shanks.
We've got to help kids to stay in school. When I hear, when I see this question, here's what I think about. When I graduated high school in 1979, I was a class of 315, 320 students. When I was a freshman, there were 500 students. What happened to all those kids? Well, most of them dropped out, we had people that moved in, but basically dropped out. Now, did I have any kid, a student that came to me and said, "I'll be dropping out today"? No, they just sort of faded away, is what happened. I didn't miss any of them, unfortunately. A lot of them I knew, but they were not involved, and that's the problem. The kids were not involved. I think that the city, there's things we can do to help kids be involved. It's been 20 or 25 years at least that we've been talking about a recreation center, a YMCA, something like this. This summer, I was in Newport, Oregon, visiting a town, this town Newport, that, smaller than Crossville, they have an amazing recreation center. Now, here's what amazed me about it, was to look at the list of activities that they have going on, not only for kids, for adults, for retirees. I was blown away at what all they had going on. It's a beautiful facility. We've been talking about it for 20 or 25 years. I really think this is something we need to do.
Thank you. Mr. Harrison.
Well, to me, it's, it's a matter of providing more economic hope for the kids and their parents and their families. If we don't do that, provide a better economic landscape, then they will be leaving here and probably not coming back. We will, we will have a brain drain, and I want to try to encourage them to be able to come back.
Thank you. Mr. Gray.
We need to promote and support partnerships with churches and elementary schools, to not only tell our kids that we love them, but to show that we love them. Great character traits such as the ones our city council recognizes every month at Martin Elementary might be taught. Boys and girls scouts and fellowship Christian athletes do a great job teaching our youth about character and how to learn and behave. We need to get them to think about what they can do with the rest of their lives. The city has spent millions on recreation facilities, baseball, softball, soccer, to name a few. They are modern and highly rated by the users, the visitors, and the citizens, and I could, of course, be convinced to revive the concept of a referendum on the indoor recreation center.
Thank you. Mr. Warner.
I want to reverse some comments from Rob about the number of dropouts we have, and that's a continuing problem. Thank you, Rob, for bringing that up.
That actually was Mr. Shanks, sir.
Oh, I'm sorry. My apologies. Blows up anyway. I believe what we need to do is reach our children before they reach a crossroads in their life. We need to step our, step up our drug prevention and intervention programs, develop, I'd love to see the development of a mentor program where children at risk develop, personal development series of learning experience, which would include apprenticeships and work study, partner with organizations like our local churches, to develop safe, wholesome, worthwhile, fun activities and learning experiences, and maximize the use of our current recreational facilities. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, our next question, we will begin with Ms. Parsons. What would you do to promote cooperation between the city, county, and the Chamber?
I think if we work together, we can accomplish much more and not duplicate efforts. I will support the Chamber as they are the ambassador for Crossville and Cumberland County. I will welcome and attend any joint meetings between the city, county, and Chamber.
Thank you. Ms. Manning.
Bring everyone together and talk about what's going on in the city, county, and Chamber, what they need. Thank you.
Mr. Shanks.
We've got to do whatever it takes. I know that in the past, there has not been a lot of cooperation between city and county, and possibly the Chamber too, but in, most recently, there has been a lot of cooperation. We had a city manager meeting every day, city mayor, county mayor, Chamber, we had the, grabbing the Chamber, we had the superintendent of schools, or the director of schools, meeting on a regular basis. This is what needs to happen, and this is good. Of course, a lot of this was, had happened because of the Horizon initiative, and we need to establish some core goals, and again, we need to do whatever it takes to be working together. We have got to cooperate. We don't always agree on things, but we still have to work together, because as a team, we can get so much more accomplished than we can working alone. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Harrison.
Well, I echo what several have said here. We went through the visioning process, went to, I believe it was 19 schools and community centers around the county, listened to what all these folks had to say. Before I came out here, I went back and read the homestead, visioning comments the eighth graders said, and they were rather devoid of hope, it seemed to me, in some cases. I was, I think, for one thing, we need to try to give them that hope again, but out of that came the Horizon process, which identified, I believe, six areas of work that needed to be done, including childcare, and drug abuse prevention, and work ethics, and manager training, and on and on. And I would look at that as our roadmap to try to address, and that has brought a whole lot of groups together that we never thought would actually come together and work together. It's bonding stuff, even as we're sitting here talking, and I want to keep working on that and encourage it.
Thank you. Mr. Gray.
Well, I submit that we can always work better with the county and the Chamber, but cooperation exists now in our local agreements, which includes the funding of the Chamber, funding of the library, the amphitheater, EMS, 9/11, pilot programs for industry, and really important, the, just to name a few, in my opinion, the Welcome Center and the Cumberland Business Incubator. We will continue to work together on business recruitment. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Warner.
We have in the past years partnered with the, with the city and the county to develop an industrial park, for example, amongst other things that Gary just mentioned. I think we can, we can partner on a number of common interests, and we do. Often times, people think the city and the county are two different entities. We all live here together. We have common interest in retail development, industrial development, tourism, water supply, recreation, education, which places. City Commission should meet with county commission members on a regular basis to identify those areas of common concern, prioritize those, take account of the Horizon initiative, and as one of my colleagues, I'm going to say said, moving forward, quit talking about it.
Thank you. Mr. Brownstedt.
The city and the county have, for the past couple of years, been getting along a lot better than they have in the past. I would support a joint committee for projects that involve both the city and the county so that the expectations and cost of each are thoroughly analyzed. Asking each other to support a project without full knowledge of cost and benefits is not a good way to work together. I would also love to see us hire a qualified city manager and let that city manager do his job. And I'm done.
Thank you. Ms. Parsons. Oh, no, we started with you. I'm so sorry. Here I am, I'm looking at the wrong number. My apologies. Ms. Manning. Crossville's Main Street is the heart of our community. What would you like to see happen to keep our central business district growing and an attractive place to visit?
I'll have more sidewalk sales at the businesses and have a Veterans Day parade, because my dad is a veteran. He served in the Army. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Shanks.
Well, I've already mentioned a little bit about this as far as with, with how I feel about the Main Street. I don't know what we're going to be able to do, but I certainly hope that we can go forward with the project that was, so much money had been spent on to plan. Three and a half million dollar grant that we had, obviously, is, had to be sent back. We were not able to use that because of, because of being voted down, and I hated that, but that happened, that's the past, we have to move forward. So, you know how I feel about the downtown. I want to take it a step further. I spoke with someone at the airport the other day, a friend of mine, I'm a pilot, I really feel like, I fly a plane, but I don't fly a lot. And he just mentioned to me, he said, and I think we have a nice airport, I've been very impressed with the gentleman, that probably he's got 20,000 hours of flying, been flown all over for just doing all kinds of things. He said if he had someone coming in, that he was going to show Crossville, that was coming to see, you know, to put a business here or something, he said he would not have to fly into the Crossville Airport. He goes, "I would pick them up at the Cookville Airport." I'm not, I was, I thought he was kidding. I said, "Why is that?" He goes, "There's just things in our airport that it doesn't, it's not up to the specs that it should be." He says, "It's not a lot of money that would have to be spent to do that. It just doesn't look kept as it should be. Not a lot of money." And, so it's interesting, I think we should have a committee that oversees that, to see that, that we're doing the things we should do for the airport, because this is the first place these people come.
Thank you. Mr. Harrison.
Well, I think an attractive, vibrant, and lively downtown is, is very important to attracting young entrepreneurs, medical specialists, the type of vibrancy we're trying to foster. And we've started to do that with Thursday the Amp, and riding the crossings, and years of efforts by Downtown Crossville, which I think has really been a tremendous thing. And we've also started to get some vibrant businesses in, in the form of, well, the Palace is a tremendous asset, of course, that's been there for a while, and then Grinder House, Social Brew, with a little bit of help and support, I think the Playhouse, we put a theater down where the, where the old Mecca Theater was across from the depot, and I would just like to see us all work together to try to make our downtown a more welcoming and place that's a tourist destination.
Thank you. Mr. Gray.
On March the 10th, 2016, the city council passed, approved, and adopted a resolution authorizing the Chamber to apply to participate in the Tennessee Downtown Program. This application was accepted, and the Chamber and the city and the county will embark through a 24-month education and grant process. I'd like to thank Ashley DeRocci and Kristy Donner for their fine work in helping to create the Downtown Revitalization Steering Committee. They did a fine job with that, and all members of the Steering Committee. I support this effort in the interim of the 24 months in the construction of a plan, a vision for this. I will continue to support the noble efforts of DCI. DCI put the Palace Theater on their shoulders and carried it all the way. I believe that the downtown is the heart of our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Warner.
I would like to see, excuse me, our downtown area, of which Main Street is only a part of downtown, a part of downtown. Think of downtown as everything from West Avenue all the way to Webb Avenue, all of the blocks in between. Don't just think only Main Street, it's the entire area. I would like to see that area become a tourist destination, a place that tourists come, just like this Playhouse. I think it's doable. We have historic sites, from, I believe, Rob helped it, the oldest building on Main Street, it's Plateau Properties.
Old and wooden structure.
Old and wooden structure. We've got the Palace Theater, we've got the theater, thanks to the county, we've got an awesome library, we have a military museum, a stone museum, we have these things. We have awesome places that some folks have just mentioned, like Grinder House, Social Brew, Kahoots is a unique shopping experience. I'm just learning myself about what we have, it's kind of exciting. By the way, in three days from now, Friday at Crossroads starts at 4 o'clock. Thanks to DCI, thanks to the Chamber, thanks to the good folks involved in Friday at the Crossroads. We've gone to do some things downtown, it's exciting.
Thank you. Mr. Brownstedt.
Well, first of all, I want to disagree with the question in, in general, because I believe it is the citizens and taxpayers that are the heart of our community. I look at our city as a whole, and I believe we have a very nice downtown area. I was thrilled to see the infrastructure improvements we've had completed lately. I would also like to explore the possibility of buying some distressed properties downtown to create parking spaces, parking lots, so people can enjoy walking downtown. It, you know, our maintenance, it does not appear that some of our city have does not appear that some of our city workers are doing routine maintenance, and I'd like to see that completed, where we do our own maintenance. I'd like to see more things that our city employees could do instead of bringing in outside contractors. I, I'd like to see sidewalks for our neighborhoods and the taxpayers that's lived 40 years in the neighborhood and long been neglected for other little pet projects. There's a lot of things I, I think we can do as a city. I don't have all the answers, and I'm sure most of these candidates up here will tell you they don't have all the answers, but I can promise you one thing. Together, as a community, as taxpayers, as voters, we, together, as a team, can move this city forward in the future and build a better, brighter city for Crossville.
Yes. Thank you. Ms. Parsons.
Okay. I will listen to Main Street business owners for their suggestions and needs for improvement. Sidewalks and lighting are a vital part of the downtown area. Sidewalks need to be repaired and expanded and maintained. Downtown area needs to be a safe, walking, accessible area.
Thank you. Mr. Shanks. What do you see as the role of city government in addressing our local education and workforce needs?
I don't, I don't see the city government directly responsible. I feel like we're indirectly responsible. We have a lot. I'm going to, if we were being asked this question five years ago, I probably would be more focused on the workforce, but since I only have 90 seconds, I'm going to focus more on the education side of things. I spend my days as a math tutor with kids in Martin and Pleasant Hill. I switch back and forth. So mainly fourth and fifth graders. So I see these kids every day. I see the struggles that they have. I'm very fortunate that I get to work one-on-one with these students. Teachers don't get to do that. And when I'm making decisions as a member of city council, if I was elected, you know, I get in decisions that I'm not sure what we need to do. I'm going to be thinking about these kids. How does it help out these kids? And because that's what we need to be doing. We have a lot of organizations in Cumberland County that do a great job of helping our youth. And at the city level, we need to be supporting them, helping them, helping them any way we can. We need to be there for them. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Harrison.
I'll just keep it simple. I believe we need to support the schools and support the partners involved in the Horizon initiative.
Thank you. Mr. Graham.
Well, statutorily, half of all the local sales tax collected in the city goes to the school system. As a citizen, I have a civic and moral obligation to serve as an advocate for the schools. In the past, our council has provided sewer capacity for the Homestead, Brown, South, North Elementary Schools, as well as the Stone High School with tap fees and roads, all with inside city rates. I will sponsor a resolution to allocate $25,000 as our council has done in the past to provide scholarships to Rome State and TCAT for youth and workforce development.
Thank you. Mr. Warner.
Business, industry, our educators, and our citizens will guide the council on what our role is to be in education. I will support our city's role through the Horizon project as that relates to workforce development.
Thank you. Mr. Brownstein.
We can continue to promote education and workforce development to our hearts' content. But if there are only service industry jobs here, we will continue to lose the educated and those that's trained for paying places that have better jobs. It is my belief that we must first create job opportunities and the workforce will develop. And until we do that, we will always continue to lose the educated. We got to get out, I'm not putting down a service industry job, but we've got to have more in the service industry for Crossville. We have to have good paying jobs that any of our children up here would want to stay and raise their family here. If they can't afford to support and pay and take care of their family, naturally, they're going to go where they can. I want to see Crossville be that place where they go and they know they can and also bring other people in. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Parsons.
As workforce needs, present and future, are identified, we can promote communication between TCAT, Rome State, and local high schools as to the type of employee training needed to build the jobs.
Thank you. Ms. Manning.
Get parents involved in more education with their kids. Workplace, workplace wages need to be improved, their jobs are paid. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Harrison. How long should someone serve on the city council? It's, it's just the way the numbers fell out.
Well, it depends. Um, I think it's really up to the voters to decide. The, the founding fathers gave us this wonderful thing called elections, where we can hire and fire people. And I'm, I'm happy with that system.
Thank you. Mr. Graham.
Well, as you all remember, as adopted in 2014, members of council may serve two four-year terms consecutively, then wait two years before serving again. I believe that the voter is a term limiter. I made a pledge in 1996 that I will serve as long as the voters want me to. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Warner.
I believe, Jay H., your secretary, to a previous referendum, we operate with a private charter in the state of Tennessee, which is kind of unique, guys. That means that when the people who live in our community decide that they want to change the charter, they may hold a referendum and accomplish that. Term limitations set two different ways. The citizens of Crossville have voted, as Jay H. pointed out, that we may serve two four-year terms and take two years off. That's say number one. Your second say is every four years, you get to say bye or have another say.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Brownstein.
I'm a firm believer in two, in two-term limits. The, we do, as Mr. Graham, Mr. Warner mentioned, the voters, we have it in charter now where we serve two four-year terms. I would like to see it go that way indefinitely and never to be able to come back. And the reason I'm saying that is no disrespect to any candidate up here, but that is why this city has been trapped in the same merry-go-round and the same political quagmire that we have seen, election after election after election under a broken record. And I believe that all of us, from a national level all the way down to our local level, should be limited to two four-year terms, and then let's put fresh blood and new ideas in there. Let it get, let's keep moving forward constantly instead of keep rolling on the same broken record. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Parsons.
I see a position on the city council as an opportunity to volunteer my time, energy, and knowledge for the advancement and growth of Crossville. If an organization has a good, energetic, concerned volunteer, that organization will benefit from your service. Voters should discern the length of service depending on how early you perform.
Thank you. Ms. Manning.
I'll let the people vote for two years or four years. It's their choice. Thank you.
Mr. Shanks.
I really appreciate JJ's answer, mainly because I thought I was going to be the only one that was going to say this. I strongly feel like it should be two-term limit, eight years total. I think we need new blood. I think it's, I think an incumbent has a huge advantage to being able to come back and to be elected because of name recognition. And I feel like as many people as we have in this, in this city, there's only five people in the council. We need to have term limits. Now, that's me personally, but the voters should decide. But me personally, an eight-year limit. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, we're at our final question, so. Mr. Graham, what would Crossville look like in 10 years if you were to be elected?
Our community would remain the top place in Tennessee to live, work, play, and worship. The city's service delivery system would have the capacity to provide water, sewer, and road systems for a community of 100,000 citizens in our county. I have seen the government of our city look what it should look like. Years ago, the executive branch operated like a well-trained, highly motivated, professional contingent, totally committed to well-established values and missions. The legislative branch, our council, will consist of five citizens whose sole purpose would be to make our community a better place. Crossville is just better here. That's what I want our government to look like in 10 years.
Thank you. Mr. Warner.
Yes, yes, I'm quite that. I'm a bit richer, I think. Our town and our county will be the kind of place where, number one, our children will say, I want to live where I grew up. Number two, visitors will say, I want to live there. Number three, our citizens will say, I'm glad I live here because I'm proud to say I'm here at Crossville and covering the town. That's what I'd like to see in 10 years.
Thank you. Mr. Brownstein.
One would see greater taxpayer participation in the decision-making and greater focus on the livability of our city. One would also see local initiatives to create neighborhoods where, that we can all be proud of. And one would see that we keep our facilities in good working order. One would also see that we take the safety and beauty of our city extremely seriously. Under Police Chief Shoah, we had, he had started and made tremendous strides in our police departments. We've made tremendous strides in our EMTs and, and our fire departments. I believe it is essential for bringing in outside companies that we continue with what Police Chief Shoah started. I want to commend, and I'm sure I can speak for all the candidates up here, our police, emergency services, our police department, fire department, EMTs. We want to thank you for the job, the tremendous fires you put in for us. I want this city to be the best city in not just Tennessee, but in all of the United States of California.
Thank you. Ms. Parsons.
Crossville would be a community of people enjoying a safe, healthy lifestyle with good job opportunities and a balance of recreation and knowledge.
Thank you. Ms. Manning.
Population will increase more. Houses will be built. All power systems will be changed. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Shanks.
I want Crossville to be a place that people want to come to. I want it to start happening because of the infrastructure that we've got, because of its beautification projects, because of the perception that we have in Crossville, that those things start happening. I hope that after 10 years, we are celebrating the 10-year, and 10-year anniversary of our city management being held. Also, what I hope is that if you ask the common citizen at this 10-year mark, if you ask the common citizen, basically somebody like me in the past that didn't keep up with things that much as what was going on in the city, and ask him, could you tell me the name of one or two of your city councilmen? I hope they can say, I don't think I know, because the city councilmen are staying out of the news. Our names are not going to be there.
Thank you. Mr. Harrison.
Well, I would like to, in 10 years from now, I'd like to see our businesses we have here still be here and have grown. And that we would be bearing some fruit from our initiative to go try to find new industries that are a good fit here, potentially high-tech jobs, that sort of thing. As we're, we're right on an internet backbone, right by my office. We could easily tap. I'd love to see all kinds of positive, creative thinking come out of that. And I'd like to see us have a, a more interesting and vibrant downtown that has become a tourist destination, more of a tourist destination, with the Playhouse. So just, we've got so many opportunities here. We're, we're just at a tipping point, I feel, where we, we have the potential to do a lot of great things. And I, and I'd like to help those things happen.
Thank you. And that brings us to the conclusion of this session of the forum. I want to thank all of the candidates for their considered and succinct answers. In fact, your answers were so succinct, this is, I, I did not expect to be saying this this evening, and rarely does a moderator in any political forum expect to be saying this. But we are so far ahead of schedule, each of you will have three minutes for your closing statements instead of two. So, thank you again. Mr. Graham, your closing statement.
Well, again, thanks for the Playhouse and the chamber for allowing us to, to be here. Our community needs a city council that works together. It goes out of its way to be transparent with the residents and is committed and careful stewards of taxpayer volumes. By the start of early voting on October the 19th, I will have visited over 1,500 homes here in Crossville, going door to door. Most everyone I talked to were asking questions about property taxes, water and sewer rates, and the conduct of the city council. Now, I want to help unite the city council. I want to help freeze property taxes for seniors. I want to improve the water filtration systems and the sewer systems and complete the Northwest Connector. We need to finish the projects that we have started with the sidewalks on Main Street. I want to also update the airport terminal building to more of a contemporary look. I will work tirelessly, tirelessly with and for you. I look forward to working for you very, very much, and I hope that you all remember to vote early, October the 19th through November the 3rd, five days before the election, and November the 8th. If you hadn't already voted, please go vote. I will work tirelessly.
Thank you, Mr. Graham. Mr. Warner.
Brad, John, Nicole, thanks for running such a smooth shift tonight. If I have any time left, I will pass it on down the line. I've got, I've got a table, three minutes here. Truly, I could see myself working with any of these people sitting up here with me tonight. And the three council members who will be joined by two of us, God willing, and you all are wise in choosing which to, I believe that you all, we can make a difference together, all of us. We can do what's necessary. We won't always agree. We won't always agree. That's just not going to happen. But I do believe that we can all be civil. And as someone saying, not have our names in the newspaper.
Thank you. Mr. Brownsted.
Let me close with this, if I may. I want to thank again each one of the citizens that have been here tonight. I appreciate your...the opportunity to talk to each one of you. For the taxpayers and property owners who feel disenfranchised and that their votes don't count and they don't matter, let me assure you that in this upcoming election, those votes do count. They do matter. If we're to move this city forward and get out of this political and corrupt merry-go-round we have had these past few years, we need each one of you to get out and vote. For those who have been seeking an honest candidate, free of special interests, free of any political connections, I, Jerry, JJ, and Brownsted, am your man. I believe it's time we meet...we have new blood and we have new direction. I believe this city needs to move forward, and we do not need to relive the mistakes of the past. Let us create a city we can all be proud of, to call home, and I'm asking each one of you for your help in accomplishing that by voting for me on November 8th. I know I'm just a common person. I'm not...I'm a retired truck driver, but I am one of each one of you. I work for a living just like each one of you did, and I believe that together, as a team, we need to start listening to the taxpayer, which is you and your voice, and we can make a difference together as a team. So, I'm asking each one of you to vote, and I'm asking you to help me make this and accomplish this, and let us move Crossville into the 22nd century and get out of the 20th-century mentality. In order to draw people into this town and companies that want to come here, we need safety. We need leaders of this town that work for you people, that have a 22nd-century mentality, not a 20th-century mentality. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Parsons.
Well, I love to be a part of a project. I can make and live within a budget. In making a budget, I will ask and listen to the answers of the taxpayers. The answers to such questions like, "How do you feel your tax dollars should be spent? What ways do you want Crossville to grow? What do you love about Crossville? What area do you want to see improved?"
Thank you. Ms. Manning.
I want to thank everybody being here, Brad, the Playhouse. I know everybody's talking about everything you know, but why I want to get in politics because my mom, she used to be...she used to handle Shirley Durr and Annabelle Brown when I was growing up, and she got the first footstep in here for the people of Cumberland County and Crossville. And that's why I want to run and be for the people out here in the city. And if you get late May, I would irrefine my power to be your voice of Crossville. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Shanks.
Well, I'm approaching this as, why am I running? I get asked that a lot. And I guess I'm running because I had a lot of people ask me to run, but I never have had a desire to run in the past, but for some reason, I felt like maybe I could make a change. Now, I don't like to get involved with things that I don't feel like I can make a change. I've been involved with a lot, other than running a company, I've been involved with a lot of organizations over the years, and I'm not one that just wants to sit back and be part of a board that just moved and just things just happened. I want to see change. So, I am wanting to get on the city council because I want to see change, and I want to see it. I don't want to talk about things we can't see. Those things we have to do also, but I want to be able to see things that we can see. As far as in business, when you run a business that had, I mean, we had a large budget, I mean, we did over $200 million in sales a year. Unfortunately, it's a very low profit margin, but I had to watch expenses. So, it's no different than being a board of directors of a business. City council for the city, it's the same thing. We have a city manager that will be running the city, and we're nothing more but a board of directors, and I feel like I'm certainly something that I feel very...something I can do very well. I love to be with people one-on-one. Like today, we're sitting here talking, I feel like I'm talking to a...I mean, you can't really see anybody out there because these lights are so bright, so I'm sort of talking to Nicole, I think, because I'm watching her play. I like to be...I like to talk one-on-one with people. I enjoy that. And I've found, obviously, I have people constantly saying to me, "How's your campaign going?" So, we start talking about things. Usually, they're the ones that bring it up, not me, because I don't know why, but I just don't. But that is something I've really enjoyed. I spoke with somebody at a ballgame the other day. We talked for 45 minutes, and he was watching a football game. And I really...he kept apologizing for wanting to talk about it so much, but I thoroughly enjoyed that. And I love to be able to meet with people one-on-one, and that's something I hope to do a lot. For those of you that vote for me, I'll be there for you. For those of you that don't vote for me, I'll be there for you. It doesn't make a difference to me. I want to be there for the citizens of Crossville. I volunteer a lot. That's basically what I do, and when I make a...when I'm going to be...is that 15 seconds? Okay. We're not getting on to the next one. I went too long. But anyway, I appreciate this tonight. This was a lot of fun. I think this is a great group up here. I can work with any of them, and I think this has been a lot of fun, and I appreciate the Playhouse for putting this on and changing. Thank you.
Mr. Harrison.
Well, I sure have enjoyed hearing everybody's comments. Thinking back on my time watching, trying to pay close attention to the government without spending all my time on it, Jeanette spent a lot of time trying to go to meetings. For a long time, we were not cooperating at all. I was...I had the honor of filling out Dr. Ivey's kind of mission term, about four months worth of time, but in that time, we had a big school board showdown over, and school was not started until we were able to get a budget. And this involved people circling the courthouse and honking the horns and football players out practicing on the courthouse lawn, and it was a very uncomfortable thing, all the fussing and fighting going on there. And then I saw the fallout when we lost two doctors, one a family practice doc and the other one a neurologist, because their wives felt like their children would not get a good education here. That was a terrible blow to the hospital and the medical service in this community. And in the past several years, I was so pleased to see all the cooperation happening between the city and the county, the two mayors actually meeting every week with the Chamber, president, and the school board, and the city manager. They were making great progress, and I was so gratified to see how well things could work. Then we, for whatever reason, we had a series of events in the spring that just put the brakes on all that. I was so upset, and that's why I'm running, because I thought, "This is awful, that we are not able to continue all that good work that was being done." So, I decided I was going to go ahead and run, and I want to tell them now that when I approach problems at the city, I'm going to use a four-way test that I think is great that Rotary uses. First, is it the truth? Second, is it fair to all concerned? Third, will it build goodwill and better friendships? And fourth, will it be beneficial to all concerned? So, that will be my approach.
Thank you. We have hardly to the end of this program this evening. I want to thank each and every one of you for being here. I want to thank everyone in the audience for being here. It's really...it is really quite important that we encourage this sort of participation in our local political process. So, I want to thank Brad Alamon from the Chamber, and Nicole Rangman, and Matt Fungey up in the assembly, and everybody else who worked. And Laura is doing lights. Oh, there you are. Hi. Yeah, I mean, everybody who has worked to put this together. It's been a grand time, and I've had a great deal of fun. Have a good evening and be safe going home. Thank you.